Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, March 3rd, 2014. I ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. As the City Council gathers in our regular session tonight, we just ask for the continued good guidance and understanding and vision that has marked our community during its 180 years of community life. We are mindful of the many challenges that are before us, and we just ask that we take and understand each and every one of them with vision and understanding and compassion and appreciation for both the history of our community and for the outstanding opportunities that hopefully lie ahead for us in the days ahead. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving so ably tonight on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them and all those from our country who are serving with them. Tonight, we just ask for leadership and guidance and understanding in our minds and hearts as we explore and understand and discuss the issues before us, knowing that each and every member of the City Council is here with their best interests of our community and ever much in their mind. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman's role, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
ATAC?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chansett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Alderman Holman is absent. Sam?
Here.
Vassiliyan?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the City Council are present and counterforce, and we obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed in tonight's agenda. Alderman Sparks, as Chairman of the Governmental Services Committee, would you please handle this?
Thank you, Your Honor. As far as I know, we are taking item number seventeen, the executive session for purchase and sale of electric power, off the agenda. We will not be using that. So I move we accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman McFadden, through the approval of the consent as presented, minus item seventeen. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Items for the approval of the agenda as presented is approved, thirteen yes, no, noes, one absent. Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Again, Alderman Sparks, as Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I propose a consent agenda as follows: to accept and place on file A, the Joint Committee of the Home Minutes for February 4th, 2014; B, the Historic Preservation Commission Minutes for February 10th, 2014; C, the Plan Commission Minutes for January 22nd, 2014; D, the January 2014 financials; E, the Tree Commission Minutes for October 2nd, 2013; the approvals are F, February 28th, 2014 payroll amount of $732,517.04; G, the accounts payable check register in amount of $966,285; H, the City Council Minutes for February 3rd, 2014; I, Resolution 14-8-R, a resolution exercising home rule authority to the Batavia Board of Police and Fire Commissioners to extend the current police officer eligibility list; J, approval authorization to purchase two 2014 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor vehicles for patrol; and one 2014 Ford Escape for Investigation Division; K, Resolution 14-23-R, Resolution 14-23-R, Resolution authorizing contract with Accurate Edge Landscape for a 2014 Westside Property Maintenance Program for $25,294.99; L, approval acceptance of Phase One improvements for the Fox Valley Industrial Park; M, Resolution 14-24-R, approving contract with Asplund Tree Expert Company for the 2014 Electric Tree Trimming Project in amount not to exceed $125,000; N, Resolution 14-25-R, authorizing purchase of a 2014 Underground Cable Puller for $102,125.44; O, Resolution 14-22-R, approval of the 2014 zoning map; P, Ordinance 14-18, an ordinance authorizing execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement with Allianz Restaurant. I move that we accept place on file the consent agenda as given.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman McFadden, through the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, noes, and one absent. Okay, moving to item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. I don't see anybody meeting that classification in the room, so unless it...Eric, you don't have any great questions? Okay. Item number seven, I think that's going to be a pass-through too, because I don't see anybody here from the Chamber of Commerce tonight, so I guess we'll...So, moving then to item number eight, we received a request from the committee that's working on the coming referendum that's going to be acted on in the 18th of March of this month called Show You Care Kane, and to do that presentation tonight, we have a, I guess, a born-raised Batavia resident, although I think you live in Aurora now, don't you?
I do.
Okay, Pat Flaherty is here, and Pat comes from a very prominent Batavia family. He has one of his ancestors that has quite renowned presence in our town, and that the Wilson Street Bridge is named after him, and that was Monsignor William Donovan, who was your father's uncle, I believe.
He was.
Right. And so, you know, Pat comes to us with a pretty strong lineage, and Pat, we thank you for coming up. Obviously, this is a nonpartisan political group, but we're here to hear what people have to say, and you requested an opportunity to speak, so you're on.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the time all of you have given me. I do live in Aurora now, but I did grow up in Batavia. I grew up over on Prairie and State Street through high school. My father was raised in the old Holy Cross Rectory by Monsignor Donovan, his uncle, who brought them out from the east when he came out here to work in the Rockford Diocese. My dad ran an old Standard Oil station over on the corner of Batavia Avenue and Main Street where the Chase Bank is now for many years. So although I have moved, like all of us, our home is where our memories are, and that's always been Batavia for me, so thank you for the time. But I'm here tonight asking the good people of Batavia for their help for an invisible and silent population, the thousands of people in Kane County with developmental disabilities, people born with an inability to care for themselves. Most of us know that children with developmental disabilities in Illinois are largely cared for through the public school system until they turn 21. That's where they go every day, that's where they spend their time and their days. But few of us have occasion to think about what happens when they graduate from special ed programs at 21 and become legally independent adults. What do they do? Where do they go? Who takes care of them? Where do they live? Up until now, the answer to those questions depended on the state and federal funding that existed to provide care for those individuals, because at 21, like any other 21-year-old, they become adults, whether they're disabled or not. They technically are no longer the responsibility of their families or their parents. I always viewed them to be the children of the community, they belonged to all of us at that point. And the state and federal responsibility has not been exercised very well over the last decades. The funding has become increasingly inadequate and unpredictable. Illinois ranks 46 out of 50 states in providing community-based support for adults with developmental disabilities, and that's why this organization, Show You Care Kane, was formed. It's a grassroots organization by people who live from Aurora up to Elgin, who have banded together in an effort to provide a more stable, permanent funding structure for the residents in Kane County with developmental disabilities. There is a law in the state of Illinois that allows counties to provide funding for people with developmental disabilities on the local level, and that is implemented through a referendum. Show You Care Kane, when it was formed several years ago, went to the county board and asked the county board to exercise their discretion under the statute to place that referendum on the ballot. They had the right to do that by just a majority vote of the county board. The county board opted not to do that, but instead asked Show You Care Kane to use the other method under the statute to get that referendum on the ballot, which was a petition drive. And we were successful in getting over 34,000 signatures of residents up and down the valley to place this on the ballot, and so now it, in fact, is on the ballot in a week or two, March 18th. And I want to mention a few things about why this is so fundamentally important. The need in Kane County is shockingly large. There are 10,000 residents in Kane County with developmental disabilities who need lifelong help. There is another 10,000 residents in Kane County who need help periodically over their lifetime because of their disabilities. There are currently in Kane County 16,000 children in special education programs, and the state of Illinois estimates that 25% of those 16,000, or 4,000 children, will need help with the rest of their lives when they graduate and become adults at age 21. The state estimates that there are currently about 2,000 adults with developmental disabilities being cared for by their aging parents in their homes here in Kane County, and will need a place to go when their parents are no longer able to take care of them. Now, the solution to this problem is this referendum, and what it asks the voters to consider is whether or not they will place on themselves a small property tax for the sole purpose of funding the support and care of Kane County residents with developmental disabilities. If passed, this referendum would cost the average homeowner in Kane County a dollar a week or $55 a year. That's based on the county's estimate of the average home value being $182,000. For those who are more fortunate in Kane County, for example, and have a home that is valued at $300,000, the cost to them would be approximately $2 a week or $100 a year. We'd like to think that that cost is, although not insignificant to many people, and we are very cognizant of that reality, we still would like to think that it is a relatively modest cost for the enormous benefit that would be provided. And there's a lot of misinformation about this referendum, and let me dispel some of that now. Funds generated by this referendum will serve only Kane County residents, not people from other counties, just Kane County residents, our friends and neighbors and colleagues in our own communities. Another piece of misinformation is that this referendum will fund or service only one nonprofit organization in the county, and that's just not true. The literature that I'll leave with you today shows that there are about 15 nonprofit organizations in Kane County right now that serve in different ways people with developmental disabilities, and all of those organizations would have an opportunity to receive funding to continue the good work that they do. So this isn't just about the Association for Individual Development, whose board I am on and have been on for a number of years, but it's not just about them. They were one of the leading organizations that recognized the dilemma that we were facing and initiated this Show You Care organization, but they simply had the vision to do that, and a number of other organizations have recognized the need and have supported this effort. Another piece of misinformation is this referendum does not create a new taxing body. The way the funds would be administered is that if passed, the county board would then appoint a volunteer board of three to five people who serve without compensation, and that board of citizens from the Fox Valley would be responsible for administering and managing and dispersing the money to the various organizations that provide services to the population of folks with developmental disabilities. It doesn't have the ability to tax that disabilities board, it will be called the 377 Board, some of you are familiar with 708 Boards. This will be called a 377 Board because that's the section of the statute from which it arises, but it doesn't have the authority to tax. Only the people have the authority to tax themselves in this referendum, and once passed, the county board has no authority to levy a tax rate higher than what the people have approved. And they don't have the ability to, as some of the misinformation out there says, routinely, yearly increase that levy. They don't have the authority to do that. This is a fixed levy if approved by the voters. The county board has the authority to lower the levy, and that will be the next step. If this is passed at the rate that I've described to you, it then goes to the county board, and they actually decide how much of that, up to that maximum amount, they will actually choose to levy. They can levy a smaller amount, the county board can if they wish, they cannot levy a higher amount, and they can never levy a higher amount. So those are some of the bits of misinformation that are out there, and with respect to the concern that these funds will be used by nonprofit organizations, can you imagine what our communities would be like if we didn't have these nonprofit organizations doing the work that they do? This is not the kind of work that for-profit entities are interested in, because there is no profit in what they do. And can you imagine the cost at the state level if these nonprofit organizations stopped doing the work that they do? If the state had to step in and carry on the same level of service that these nonprofits provide? Right now, on the local level, we can provide community care at a rate that is three times less than what the state spends. The state spends to house one adult with developmental disabilities at state institutions about $177,000 a year. We can do that on the state level for about $50,000 a year. So the localized, decentralized government that this referendum is really about does what we all always thought it would do, allows us to function in a more economical and more efficient and streamlined fashion. And the other thing about the nonprofits is they do the work of the angels, and every single one of us in the community ought to be grateful that they exist and that they're willing to do the work that they do. So, I'm here to let you know that that's our problem in Kane County, and it's growing every year. As these children graduate from special education programs, I've brought with me my wife and my son, Mark, and Mark's a graduate of the Hope Wall Program in Aurora. Mark lives with us now, Mark's 32, and we're not getting younger, Judy and I, and at some point in time, we're asking the same question that I asked all of you at the beginning, and that is, what happens when we're no longer able to do it? Where do they go? Are there facilities still available to take care of adults in that circumstance? And, you know, we're one of the fortunate families that have the ability to do that right now, but there are many adults with developmental disabilities born into families that are less structured and less capable of providing that service. And the consequences are that they end up in state institutions, out of their communities, they end up in nursing homes, some of them end up homeless. And not just the question of housing, but the productivity of their daily lives, what do they do? As I mentioned before to you, that they've spent their first 21 years of life going to school every day. When they finish with that, what do they do every day? How are they kept busy? They can have jobs, they can have training, they can have day programs, and that's part of what this funding is about. It's about providing, for the first time in Kane County, a stable, reliable funding source that gives folks with developmental disabilities lives of dignity and purpose, something that the rest of us all take for granted. And so, thank you very much for your kindness and listening. We would ask that you please consider the merits of what I've mentioned tonight, and that when you go to the polls on March 18th, you will recognize the modest cost that is being asked in relation to the enormous benefit that is received, and that you might vote yes for that, and that you would further maybe talk to your friends and your neighbors and your colleagues, your acquaintances, and educate them about exactly what that archaically worded referendum is on the ballot, what that means, because it means just what I've said to you today. And so, we would appreciate you being ambassadors to the extent you feel you're able to do that. Be the voice that all of these folks don't have, so thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, I did want to mention one other thing. In Batavia alone, there are 92 families in Batavia, your constituents, 92 families who are on the official state waiting list right now for services. The average, the percentage estimate that's used with respect to most communities is that most communities have about 4.9% of their population are developmentally disabled. If that general principle holds true in Batavia with a population currently of about 24,000, there are about 1,176 adults, individuals with developmental disabilities, living amongst us here in Batavia, and they're going to need help too, if they don't need it now. Sorry.
I have a couple of questions. This referendum then provides care for them once they turn 18 or once they turn 21?
Yeah, once they turn 21, because the state by law has to care for them through the public school system until they turn 21. So all folks in special ed programs go to school until they're 21, but then that's when they have to figure out what happens then.
Okay, and then just to make sure I have my facts straight, you said there are 10,000 residents in the county that currently have, you know, fall into this category, another 10,000 that periodically may need it, and another 16,000 that are youth who will eventually...
Well, not the full 16,000, yes. There are 10,000 who need full-time, lifelong care in Kane County. There's another 10,000 who need care periodically over their lifetime with various aspects of their lives. There are 16,000 children presently enrolled in special ed programs up and down the valley, and the state says about 25% of those 16,000, when they graduate, will also need help with either, completely with the rest of their lives or with some part of the rest of their lives. And that responsibility for all of this care lies with these organizations up and down the valley that have stepped into the breach and have said, you know, we're going to provide a life of purpose for these individuals to the extent we can.
What's kind of the scope of the services that this referendum would provide if passed?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm glad you raised that, I didn't mention it. It will provide housing. As many of you know, many organizations provide residential homes for people with developmental disabilities. The Association for Individual Development alone operates 20 some-odd group homes up and down the valley, staffed by workers who earn very, very minimal money to do the work that they do, and they care for these individuals 24/7 in many instances. It will provide housing, it will provide day programs, structured environments for adults with developmental disabilities to go to every day and have some meaning and structure and purpose to their daily existence. It will provide jobs. Many of the organizations provide jobs in the community through job coaches. So, for example, they might have maintenance services, office maintenance services, and they will have several individuals go to those offices, and they'll have a job coach that goes with them in the night to help clean up the offices and do the normal jobs that the maintenance workers do. It will provide workshops. The Association alone runs two workshops, one down in Aurora and one up in Elgin, that local businesses contribute work to, whether it's light assembly work, usually that's what it is, light assembly work of various types, and people who are unable to work in the community because of various conditions, my son being one of them, because in addition to being developmentally disabled, he has a major seizure disorder, and so he's not capable of working in the community because of the risk that poses to the workplace. And so, it provides workshops. It will provide transportation to families with developmental disabilities. And the other really important thing that it does, and it falls under the radar all the time, is it provides respite care for families who currently attempt to provide that care on their own 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And if you've never been a caretaker for a child with developmental disabilities, it is one of the most intense jobs that you can have. It's performed out of love, believe me, but it's one of the most intense jobs that you can have, and so one of the things this does is provide respite care for those families, somebody who can come in periodically and give a break, whether it's a few hours or a day, to the caretakers that are currently doing that work. So, that's the range of services, housing, day programs, jobs, training, transportation, and respite care.
Are there questions of Pat? Pat, on behalf of the City Council, I just want to thank you for coming up and sharing your story with us. We have had in Batavia some, you know, I think some kind of heart-tugging experiences with group homes here. We've had several in our community, and they have done blessed things to the people that they were serving, and many of those were lifelong Batavia residents who many of us at this table here knew or know, and so, I mean, I certainly think we've seen the virtues and the value of what this service provides, so best wishes to you and your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Will I leave some of those brochures that haven't passed around?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving then to item number nine, which is approval of the motion for waiver of formal bid for contract for purchase of water meters. Alderman Clark, under Utilities?
Yeah, that's me. I'm going to present the resolution and then make the motion before, but I'll present the resolution so it explains why I'm waiving formal bidding. Batavia's Water and Sewer Utilities is in the process of updating the water meters throughout town. The utility is in need of bulk purchasing of water meters and electronic reading devices, and staff has spent considerable time and resources evaluating the options that they have, and they concluded that the water meters should remain Badger meter and that the electronic reading devices should remain Itron. Both of these have limited local distribution, and staff did seek quotes. Since there's only a few companies that offer or, you know, carry this product, there was no need for formal bidding, and we didn't receive quotes from everybody, so we still got the semi-formal bidding process going, so we still are getting a fair price from the people who are offered the quotes. The city has a long history with both of these products. Staff feels strongly that there should be standardization with the meters due to maintenance, parts repairs, and reading protocols. Some of the meters that we have now will no longer be able to get parts for, they're just old and outdated and not manufactured anymore. The standardization of the meters and associated reading system will ensure that the city receives the proper revenue and errors will be minimized. There will be a way for the meter reading to be more efficient. So, they got their quotes, they submitted them to the council for review, and the staff is recommending, well, first, they're going to recommend approval of Midwest Meter, but I will first make a motion that we waive formal bidding for the purchase of water meters and reading devices.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the motion to waive formal bidding on the water meter contract. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Yes, so staff recently solicited for quotes for the purchase of the residential Badger meters and the Itron reading devices, and the staff recommends alternate bid number three for Midwest Meter Company for the purchase of meters at a unit price of one thirty-four fifty each. Staff is recommending council purchase the, authorize the purchase of the meters as required. So, we, this resolution approves for an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars so they can get as many devices and meters as they need within that budget. So, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution fourteen twenty-one, authorizing the purchase of Badger water meters and Itron reading devices for Midwest Meter, Inc., Edinburgh, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution fourteen dash twenty-one dash R for the authorizing the contract for the purchase of water meters. Any discussion?
Just wanted to point out also that this is a lower cost, and also, to attain these meters is three days with Midwest where the other companies we were looking at were twenty days and thirty days. So, it's, they're readily available to Midwest, which in case of an emergency is nice to have.
Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
That vote is twelve yes, one no, and one absent. Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item number twelve, which is Resolution fourteen dash twenty-seven dash R, Budget Amendment for the Wilson Street Traffic Signal Interconnect with Thorn Electric. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is to finish up, or actually, what is finished up on the IDOT interconnect project on Wilson Street, and we need to take care of this last bill that's on here. The funds for this will be reimbursed back to the TIF account once they're received back through IDOT, but this is to pay the bill ahead of getting the money back from IDOT. And so, we need to have a budget amendment in the amount of eighty-four thousand eighty dollars and one cent. So, with that, I'll make a recommendation that we pass Resolution fourteen dash seventeen dash R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution fourteen dash eleven dash R for retention of morrow and associates for legislative assistance in the amount of not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for the year. Second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the Resolution fourteen dash eleven dash R for retention of morrow and associates. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
That vote is twelve yes, one no, and one absent. Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item number twelve, which is Resolution fourteen dash twenty-seven dash R, Budget Amendment for the Wilson Street Traffic Signal Interconnect with Thorn Electric. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is to finish up, or actually, what is finished up on the IDOT interconnect project on Wilson Street, and we need to take care of this last bill that's on here. The funds for this will be reimbursed back to the TIF account once they're received back through IDOT, but this is to pay the bill ahead of getting the money back from IDOT. And so, we need to have a budget amendment in the amount of eighty-four thousand eighty dollars and one cent. So, with that, I'll make a recommendation that we pass Resolution fourteen dash seventeen dash R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution fourteen dash twenty-seven dash R. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
That vote is twelve yes, one no, and one absent. Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item number twelve, which is Resolution fourteen dash twenty-seven dash R, Budget Amendment for the Wilson Street Traffic Signal Interconnect with Thorn Electric. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is to finish up, or actually, what is finished up on the IDOT interconnect project on Wilson Street, and we need to take care of this last bill that's on here. The funds for this will be reimbursed back to the TIF account once they're received back through IDOT, but this is to pay the bill ahead of getting the money back from IDOT. And so, we need to have a budget amendment in the amount of eighty-four thousand eighty dollars and one cent. So, with that, I'll make a recommendation that we pass Resolution fourteen dash seventeen dash R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution fourteen dash twenty-seven dash R. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
That vote is twelve yes, one no, and one absent. Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item number twelve, which is Resolution fourteen dash twenty-seven dash R, Budget Amendment for the Wilson Street Traffic Signal Interconnect with Thorn Electric. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is to finish up, or actually, what is finished up on the IDOT interconnect project on Wilson Street, and we need to take care of this last bill that's on here. The funds for this will be reimbursed back to the TIF account once they're received back through IDOT, but this is to pay the bill ahead of getting the money back from IDOT. And so, we need to have a budget amendment in the amount of eighty-four thousand eighty dollars and one cent. So, with that, I'll make a recommendation that we pass Resolution fourteen dash seventeen dash R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution fourteen dash twenty-seven dash R. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
That vote is twelve yes, one no, and one absent. Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item number twelve, which is Resolution fourteen dash twenty-seven dash R, Budget Amendment for the Wilson Street Traffic Signal Interconnect with Thorn Electric. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of meetings to announce tomorrow night at the J-Cow. There's two items on the agenda. One of them is going to be taken off of the agenda, the streetscape update on TIF. There's nothing new on that, so that'll be taken off of the agenda tomorrow evening. The other item is the billboard discussion. I am not going to be here tomorrow night, and I understand, Lucy, you're not going to be here. So, I think Lucy asked Alan if he could fill in for us tomorrow night, if that's okay with you, Your Honor?
Who?
Alan.
Any of you committee chairman are quite capable, so...
Okay, so Alan will be taking that discussion.
It's your meeting, I have nothing...
All right, so the next meeting, and that's at seven-thirty. The next meeting is planned commission, and that'll be canceled for Wednesday evening. On March tenth, Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet at five-thirty, and then on March eleventh, we have another J-Cow. And again, on that agenda is an update on the streetscape and the TIF. If there's anything new on that, that'll come up at that time also. That's all I have.
Very good. Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
For tomorrow night's Joint Committee of the Hall, there's the electric rate, very difficult, electric rate discussion will be had, and the electric rate stabilization. That conversation will also be continued till March eleventh's meeting, so there'll be lots of time to figure out what we're going to do with that. Other than that, that's it for Public Utilities. Thank you.
Okay. City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night on the J-Cow agenda, we have the brush removal contract. Remember, it went out last, I think, the end of last week. That'll be discussed tomorrow night. And then, on March eleventh, we have several items, FERME drainage, wetland consultants, animal control contract with the county, and then school district fuel agreement. And then also, to draw everybody's attention to March twelfth and thirteenth, there will be the special J-Cow meetings that, those two nights, Wednesday and Thursday, for engineering and architecture for City Hall interviews, and I believe those will be at seven-thirty, or seven, I think it was seven, seven P.M. That's all. Thank you.
Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. March fourth, J-Cow, we will be discussing the home real sales tax, and on the J-Cow March eleventh, we'll be continuing discussing the home real sales tax. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. We have other business tonight? Anybody have any other business?
Your Honor.
Alderman Wolf?
Thank you. Now, it's just a little bit of a slow time for BATV, and I'm not busy, so I just wanted to give a shout-out, congratulations to the girls' basketball team that finished with the best record in school history. They had a regional title win, and they also did play and win one sectional game, and then play for a sectional title against Geneva. Unfortunately, that didn't turn out the way we wanted it to. They did get beat pretty soundly. In fact, Geneva's playing tonight. Good news, though, tonight from Plainfield East, the Batavia Boys team won their regional play-in game, so they get a chance to play again tomorrow night against Bowling Brook, and that's at Plainfield East at seven P.M. tomorrow night. So, if anybody wants to skip the J-Cow meeting, they can go to that.
Anybody else, Alderman O'Brien?
Just wanted to say, my wife and I had dinner at El Solomio, and they are now serving dinner, not just the ice cream that they serve, the Italian ice cream. So, putting it out to the community to support the businesses in our downtown and have dinner at Solomio. The food was very good, a very pleasant experience. So, I'd recommend it to anyone.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Early voting has started for the primaries. City Hall is an early voting site. It is open Monday through Friday, this week and next week, so that'll be until March fourteenth from nine A.M. till three-thirty P.M. If those times are not convenient, you can check the Kane County Clerk's website to see what other locations there are available. I know that the Government Center is also available, it's an early voting site. I believe the Messenger Library is also. Again, check the Kane County websites, and don't forget, for early voting, since you're not voting in your own precinct, you have to bring a state issued I.D.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay, I just got a brief thing I want to talk about at the mayor's report, but Mr. McGrath is going to turn on some PowerPoint for me here. This is one of those moments when Batavia really needs to pound its chest and talk about itself, from the perspective that last night, when the Academy Award announced the selection of the best movie for this year, the best movie was Twelve Years a Slave. And the movie Twelve Years a Slave, if you've seen it, maybe you haven't realized it, but there is a scene in that movie that has Batavia all over it. In fact, Batavia is, it's not named, but it certainly is pretty close to it. In a scene in that movie, the movie's about a gentleman from Saratoga Springs, New York, who is a free black in the eighteen-fifties, and he is talked into coming on a trip down
out to the community to support the businesses in our downtown and have dinner at Solo Mio. The food was very good, a very pleasant experience, so I'd recommend it to anyone.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Early voting has started for the primaries. City Hall is an early voting site. It is open Monday through Friday, this week and next week, so that'll be until March fourteenth from nine AM till three-thirty PM. If those times are not convenient, you can check the Kane County Clerk's website to see what other locations there are available. I know that the Government Center is also available as an early voting site. I believe the Messenger Library is also. Again, check the Kane County websites, and don't forget, for early voting, since you're not voting in your own precinct, you have to bring a state-issued ID.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay, I just got a brief thing I want to talk about at the mayor's report, but Mr. McGrath is going to turn on some PowerPoint for me here. This is one of those moments when Batavia really needs to pound its chest and talk about itself, from the perspective that last night, when the Academy Award announced the selection of the best movie for this year, the best movie was Twelve Years a Slave. And the movie Twelve Years a Slave, if you've seen it, maybe you haven't realized it, but there is a scene in that movie that has Batavia all over it. In fact, Batavia is... It's not named, but it certainly is pretty close to it. In a scene in that movie, the movie's about a gentleman from Saratoga Springs, New York, who is a free Black in the eighteen-fifties, and he is talked into coming on a trip down to Washington DC to play his violin, and while he's down there, he gets shanghaied and kidnapped, and is taken down south and made a slave for twelve years, and the movie's about his experiences while he's a slave. And while he's a slave, he's in this swamp down in someplace in the south, and he shows everybody else that's down there how you tie logs together and roll them down as a swamp stream, and it makes production. Everybody doesn't have to get on the ground and carry all these heavy pieces of wood and whatever. So he gets down at the other end with all these logs that he's moved on the water, and the slave master says to him, "Where did you learn how to do that?" And he says, "I worked for Mr. William Van Ortrick on building the Champagne Canal up in upstate New York," and he did. And when this gentleman... This movie is based on an actual book, and so it's named Twelve Years a Slave, and the person that's in the movie, it's about a gentleman by the name of Solomon Northrup, who was this guy that's captured and taken down south. And in nineteen... Eighteen twenty-nine and eighteen thirty, he was employed along with some others on the Champagne Canal in the section over which William Van Ortrick, who later came to Batavia in eighteen thirty-five, was the superintendent. And in the movie, he physically names William Van Ortrick as the man who taught him how to do all this stuff. And so Van Ortrick left New York State in eighteen thirty-five and came out here and began his empire. First, he went up to Appleton, Wisconsin, and then started a paper mill, and then he came back to Batavia, and he ended up, among other things... Well, he didn't, but his son ended up building this building that we're in right now, is our City Hall in about eighteen ninety-nine. This is a picture of... The original William Van Ortrick, who the movie is named after, or who was portrayed or talked about in the movie, died in eighteen fifty-four. And so this is his son who died in nineteen fourteen, and this is a picture taken of him by late Madge Spencer, who lived up at the house at the corner of Washington Avenue and Wilson Street, and she and her boyfriend got a camera in nineteen oh nine and went around downtown Batavia and took pictures of four hundred and seventy-seven men in town. And Mr. Van Ortrick, at the time, was one of the prominent businessmen in town, and they were trying to get him to agree to let his picture be taken, and he didn't want his picture taken, and as you can see in this picture, he's about to reach up and grab his hat off his head and cover his face, but they did get... They were able to manage to catch this picture of him. And so as a result of that, the Van Ortrick family got this... Now they're in the motion Picture of the Year, and they're obviously... They come out of Batavia, we have a street named after them, and whatever, so I'm pounding my chest here that of all the things that could happen to Batavia, we end up having a moment in the movie that was named the Picture of the Year. Now then, the Van Ortricks with the movies, for some reason, is not stopping with that one. There is another movie that's just been issued called Monuments Men, and this is a picture of myself in my younger days. This is taken in nineteen eighty-six, out front of the building here, and the gentleman standing with me is the great-great-grandson of the William Van Ortrick from Twelve Years a Slave, and this is William Van Ortrick III. And William Van Ortrick III was a very interesting personality. He lived in New York City, but once a year, he would come back to the Midwest to visit all of his old friends, because he grew up in Batavia, and he used to stop and see me at City Hall, and so one time, he decided he wanted to have his picture taken in front of the family building, and he asked me to come out, so I went out front, and I stood, and we had this picture taken. Now, the rest of this story is, is that Mr. Van Ortrick in nineteen forty-four was a lieutenant colonel or captain in the United States Army, and he was a nineteen thirty-four graduate of Princeton University with a degree in Art and Architecture. And so he got recruited to be in a special unit of the United States Army called the Monuments Men. And they have just recently made a movie, which I believe is out at Randall Six Fifteen right now, called The Monuments Men, and the movie is a little bit different. George Sheets and I, both in the coming edition of Neighbor's Magazine, were aware that all this was happening, but we didn't know we were going to be Best Picture, but George wrote an article about the Van Ortricks and the Batavians in the movie, and I mentioned it in my column. And in Monuments Men, they seemingly, for whatever reason, they changed all the names of the players in the movie so that the actual people who portrayed the actual work were not named in the movie. They had some other name. So if any of you go see the movie, I mean, I guess it could be debated about whether or not William Van... What character William Van Ortrick plays in the movie, but he came back to the United States, and many years later, he showed up in my office one day and presented me with a copy of this book that I'm showing you, the front cover of, and it's called Watch Your Step, and the book is available up at the Batavia Public Library, because he gave several copies to the library, in which he tells about his story, his part of being part of the Monuments Men. And just George Sheets put together, and I would agree with him, that in the movie that you see, Van Ortrick was... There's a scene in the movie... There are scenes in the movie where the Nazis are robbing museums in Paris, France, of all the main architecture, and are taking it back to Germany. And there was a woman in the museum that was very upset about all this, and she started keeping a record of everything, a secret record of all the stuff that the Nazis were taking. And after they got it all out of there, she saved the record, and then when the Paris was liberated, she gave her records to a gentleman by the name... Let's see, George has got it here. The woman's name, and the real... The name of the lady in the movie is... Her name is, in nineteen forty-four, Rose Valand confided the details of the Nazis looting to James R. Romer, who in nineteen forty-five was Van Ortrick's superior officer in the Monuments Battalion, and later was the director of the Metropolitan Museum of Arts in New York City. In Monuments Men, Valand is portrayed by Kate Blanchett as Claire Simone. Now, I don't know why they had to change the name, but they did, and Romer is portrayed by Matt Damon. So if you ever go see the movie, Van Ortrick from Batavia was a... One of the men that worked for who Matt Damon plays in the movie. And I've had several people now start to ask me about this, so I thought we'd throw this on TV. It's going to be in the New Neighbor's Magazine, but the Van Ortrick family, for whatever reason, really hit the movies big time this month, between Twelve Years a Slave and Monuments Men, because they're four generations apart, but the original William Van Ortrick and William Van Ortrick III are both basically noted in award-winning movies that are now currently playing in the United States. I don't know of many other towns around here that can boast that at this moment, but I just thought I'd throw that at you for what it's worth, because it's kind of a fun piece of Batavia trivia, and certainly an interesting piece of our history that we've got, you know, the movies going... You can turn the lights back on, Bill. So if any of you... Have any of you seen either one of those movies yet?
Yes.
Twelve Years a Slave?
I saw Monuments Men.
So the... You know, I went and saw it, and I had, you know, I wasn't... I had read Van Ortrick's book, and the names weren't ringing a bell. So George Sheets sat down, and he and I talked about it a couple of times, and we've figured out who everybody was here and why they... In the movie, they changed all the names, I don't know, but they did, of all the people, but Van Ortrick makes some interesting comments about it in his book, and if anybody really is into this, I'd encourage them to go up to the library and check out Watch Your Step, because he presents some kind of contrary views about a couple of things you see in the movie, so it's an interesting little tidbit of Batavia history. Mr. Van Ortrick was a very interesting individual, and he had great plans that he was going to come back. When he died, he was going to leave a large sum of money to the community, and on the third floor here, he wanted to take part of the third floor and recreate his family's legacy and display all this. He had a huge collection of artwork in his penthouse that he had on Sutton Place in midtown Manhattan. I went one time, and I was in New York over to see him, and I saw this stuff that he had, and he had this huge collection of art, nothing to do with Batavia, but fine arts from around the world that he had collected. And he allegedly was going to have them left all so they could go on the third floor of City Hall here, but unfortunately, when he made his will, he did not properly, legally take care of a wife of his that he had, that they weren't living together, and at the end of the day, she stepped in and clammed on to sixty-five percent of his estate. So it ended up in a big fight, and the Batavia Historical Society got involved. This is back in the nineteen eighties now, got involved in it. They ended up having to take the whole estate and taking it to Sotheby's and having an auction and turn the whole thing into cash. And the money that was then left, that was left of the... After his wife got the big chunk of the money, was given to the Historical Society, and they did some stuff over at the Deepwater Museum, and there's a portrait of him over there for this rather large sum of money that he left to Batavia. But that was kind of... Unfortunately, it didn't work out the way he had planned, because he was going to have this, quite this museum up there. And I see this movie now, and I just wonder about some of this. But anyway, it was an interesting time of Batavia here, and I was fortunate enough to be here when he was running around, and he was quite a showman when he'd show up, because as you saw in the picture, he had a cane that he used to carry around, and he would start coming in, and he'd bark orders and make comments about different things, and some things he liked and some things he didn't. And he was a high critic of architecture, but he loved this building, and the city of Batavia, and the Batavia City Council, and Alderman Brown's father, who he never met, were high on his list of people to be commended for saving this building and doing what we did, and he thought this was just the most wonderful thing that ever happened, that we had saved this building and whatever. So anyway, it just all kind of came out, but all of a sudden, here in the last few weeks, here comes Van Ortrick's and all this Hollywood movie stuff, so you never know what's going to turn up on the silver screen, but Batavia certainly is having its run of it right at the moment between the two movies.
Did I hear correctly, if I could ask you also, that is, Batavia has an involvement with the statue Oscar?
Yes, that was made in the early days by Shumway Foundry. And that's one of the things, hopefully, we're going to say when we put the little presentation down here on the cornices that are down here on the corner. They made those at Shumway Foundry, too, and Shumways cut the original pattern for the Academy Award, and I believe they poured it down there for a number of years at the Shumway Foundry.
You got an Oscar down there, huh?
Yeah, we made the Oscar down the street here. Again, little-known facts about Batavia and its history. Probably one of the better stories about downtown, I don't mean to give you a history lesson, but I shared this recently. We had one of the... Mr. Rauner, who was the running for governor, some of you were there, came to town, and they asked me to welcome him to the community, which I was asked to do him and a couple of other governor candidates. One of them, I guess, isn't coming now, and the other one I haven't heard from yet. But so anyway, when you're the mayor, you do them all. So Mr. Rauner came, and so I talked a little bit about the windmill legacy, but you know, he's an investment banker, and I said, you know, Batavia had a real interesting story with an investment banker, because we had a gentleman that was encamped up at the old Louise White School in the late nineteen nineties, who was an investment banker, and lo and behold, he had been a... His boyhood had been spent with his parents in Afghanistan, where they were missionaries. And he had befriended a number of the folks who were involved in the early war in Afghanistan. And one day, Sixty Minutes showed up here, and they were wanting to do a story, which they did do, live as the opening segment on Sixty Minutes, about this gentleman that was up at the old Louise White School, because come to find out, he was funneling a bunch of his own money over to his friend, who was then running the war in Afghanistan against Osama bin Laden prior to nine eleven, and before the US got involved, and that he and the Central Intelligence Agency from the Louise White School in Batavia, Illinois, were effectively running the war in Afghanistan before nine eleven. And Carol Marine showed up representing Sixty Minutes, and they did a story over there, and the day they were doing it, people looked around, and I went over there, because I heard they were here, and I get there, and they said, well, gee, Denny Hastert still had... He was Speaker of the House, and his office was right at the bottom of the Hill, and they were really interested in that, but then somebody got involved in that, and they decided not to add that part to the story. But then we got into it... They ended up not even wanting to say where this was, so when they opened the segment up on Sixty Minutes, and I've got the tape of the thing, she introduces it from an office west of Chicag... In a suburb west of Chicago, is all they said. It didn't show... And when they were here, they were over there on Van Buren and State and Washington Avenue, filming the streets and showing the neighborhoods, like it was this quiet little residential neighborhood like it is, but at the time, when we got it on TV, we decided not... I don't know who we were, but we decided not to show any of that as part of the presentation on the Sixty Minutes, so. It was just from an office in a suburb west of Chicago, where we were running the war from Afghanistan. So that's all part of our history, and we can all talk about that. So as I've talked to you before, one of the things I'd like to do is get... Really, downtown Batavia has some fascinating history moments in it, and I'm not so sure we don't have a couple more now after this Van Ortrick deal, but certainly with Lindbergh's appearance here and Mary Todd Lincoln, and the fact that the minister at the Methodist Church was the grandfather of Buzz Aldrin, who landed on the moon, and the whole... We got a whole bunch of stuff. I'd like to put together like a walking tour or a map that we could give visitors, and they could walk around downtown Batavia and see all these spots where all these people were or existed or events took place, because we really do have some fascinating history, much on a national scale, which is the most interesting part about it. I mean, we could put Mark Twain here, Dwight D. Eisenhower, and a whole bunch of different